Okay, may I ask all please order? First item of the proposal call.
Alderman left, yours, Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
And you're out there.
Right here.
Alderman D O T.
Here.
Uh, next time in the indication about past peril known for crossroads skirts called by President for Alderman House.
Let's pray together. God, you're good and we give you thanks tonight for your goodness, for your watch care over us and God just for placing us in this community and giving us the, uh, this place to live, these people to live with and, uh, and this community to govern. We got them thankful tonight, uh, for a community that cares, a community that, uh, gives opportunity for people to get involved and to, uh, make an impact and, uh, and a community that cares for those, uh, that are in need and, uh, and we're just, we're just grateful this morning, this evening for, uh, these aldermen, for our mayor, for these, uh, city, uh, employees that, uh, that sit for us tonight that will, uh, just change that business and govern and make decisions that the bulk of our community will have no idea about. The time that they invest, uh, the decisions they make, the hardships, the, uh, the difficult decisions and so God, we just pray you'd give them wisdom and discernment tonight and that you would bless them for their efforts this night away from their families, away from their children, their husbands, their wives, uh, and just make tonight, uh, a night that is profitable for this community as we head into the fall, into the winter, uh, and we'll have so many people that'll have so many different kinds of needs. So we just pray that you'll use tonight, uh, as catalyst for, uh, for impact for the upcoming months in this community. We pray in the name of Jesus.
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the visible for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next time is the true, true of the agenda. No change to the American. Next up is proclamation, Eagle Scout proclamation for Tyler, William, and Paul. Step forward.
City of Green Valley's very proclamation, whereas Tyler DeHahn has been introducing himself by obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout, Boy Scout Troop six nine two, whereas Tyler has been recognized in this area with outstanding community service, leadership skills, positive attitude, and active achievement. Whereas Tyler has proved to be an asset to the Green Valley community, is true to family and friends, whereas Tyler has set an example for all of them and has distinguished himself as true to this community, this award. Whereas the City of Green Valley would also like to recognize Tyler for his outstanding achievement in becoming Eagle Scout. Now therefore being proclaimed City of Green Valley, one of all of them, and Mayor Mike Todd, proud to recognize Tyler DeHahn for achieving scouting's highest honor of the show, ranked the Eagle Scout, dated the twelfth day October two thousand fifteen. Mike Todd.
Okay, next time is the participation. The answer is to the forty other microphones and address the board to give your name and address to the record. Have anyone who was addressed the board today?
I'm in the Green Valley, been here for twenty years and there's been nine here tonight and talked about payday loans. Um, in my daily experience, the things that I saw with, with people that came into loans, they were so caught up in these loans that they literally destroyed their life. And I just think with the interest rates and they're not coming down over three hundred percent, they have not only get one loan, but they have to get another loan to pay that loan back because it's already doubled. And, you know, it just keeps going on and on. And I just really don't think that payday loans are fit for Green Valley. You have any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to address the board? Okay, now move on to the agenda. I've listened long and well, and pretty much attended, five seconds. Second, all normal. Any questions?
Next, our top four, eight of our top four. How's the county?
Do you have anything else to say?
All of the area today, aye.
Aye.
All both at the same time. Okay, the previous business, move on to new business. That will put their license application and, uh, red bear, LLC, do your business as voting barbecue and burgers.
Mayor and Board, we do have, uh, the applicants with us today, um, they term in all of the appropriate and necessary paperwork to obtain this license, um, various national licenses. They call them liquor license, um, their, our official license is that, so we're using the group and, um, I'm just waiting to, um, give approval from the state and the county for their, or if they want to do that, we will then choose to, uh, see what's in the script. One thing I'd like to know, um, you have the ordinance being provided with, but the portion highlighted that asks that, um, a motion in regard to the minimum program meeting and the issue of death license, in fact, you have waived that portion of the ordinance, uh, and if you do decide to prove that, even that, that portion, we are going to have to waive in this case. So if you have any questions, um, the business owners, there's your answer.
Okay, do you have any question?
Was it, was it that supposed to be?
It can be.
And you said, is there any agenda?
It's on the agenda for discussion, but if you'd like to prove it all, you can do it.
I got a motion for Alderman Johnson to waive the section of ordinance, the section E. Five seconds to waive the most. Any, any question on the, uh, motion to waive that question of the ordinance?
We'll need justification to why we want to waive it, for various different reasons why we need to waive it.
Uh, and the business owners can speak to this, they, uh, order, I hope you two are aware, thank business before our next, or even if that is approved, this, this, like, um, this is what I can discuss. Your plans for the ordinance, please explain.
Um, as far as, you know, my, uh, first, on last thing, uh, I don't think the next thing is a bill. Well, we was gonna try to maybe deal with that last week October, but as much as anybody that's been doing that, it's taken a little bit longer, but you know, sometimes when you turn it over to cheap tables, or the license over with the app, transfer, or had the license for the last eight years, where it's been, to transfer it over, it takes like three weeks to do that, where it's approved from you. So it's another step, you know, so it takes a little bit to do that, after you're approved, we need to sort it, you know, we're not sure what that means on time, but.
And, and actually, Dayton County, you're speaking of, Dayton County, the one that could have privileged that.
We just have, we, in order to transfer our state license from whole camp to Green Valley, I just needed approval from the city in order to do so. And in order to do that, I take a couple weeks after I send their paperwork to them, for them to transfer a location where I could be able to be open and bring alcohol or barbecue at that time. So that's basically why we are trying to get as much paperwork that I can, to do the process, that's my last process, but I've had too much open, if I'm getting our holdings ready for me, but for our license is permanent, so you, any money licensing, I have to have the approval from Green Valley where we get it on the state in two hours.
I'm asking proof, wait this second, if paper business, pretty much, uh, fully exposed, I'm rushing it, I just didn't want it.
I don't think that'll be our case at all. And, and we're anxious to be excited to be here and I don't know if you've been, uh, to the restaurants at all, but you can see a tremendous, um, difference in what we have done to that holding, um, and I think it's a little, we'd be very glad that we still hold in the state.
I, I stayed in the courts, uh, to find, a long time ago, in Harrahland and Highland, and I did a lot of that and I saw the deal, and I was in times with, uh, certain stuff, areas, but I feel like the fact that you're on base, you know, model, font, you know, if they want that, you were excited.
I was excited.
Thank you. We're, we're trying to do it while you're here.
I do the effort, I mean, I'm.
We feel very well, and I mean, that's important.
Yeah, I do the effort, I mean, the mind around here, so I've seen it, so.
What, what's your view? Well, we drew, we checked, and, you know, a couple of our students moved down there, we had, uh, laid a pocket down there, we moved our feet down there, that's what, for the, and, you know, so we took to the first floor of the street, and rented that man a building, a little walkie place, and just kept going, and we made a living. And, uh, my son was calling, saying, uh, you can be a scout, you know, I've already been a little bit, she got about a year and a half up down there, so we kind of, in recognition of that building, and we kind of, do what that little bit, so we, we started, and we went back, and it was close all the way to the country. There, and that way, it seems like, you know, like.
Do I have, uh, any discussion on the motions and, let me just need a little bit? If not, all favor of the ordinance, aye. Aye. All both at the same time, right? Now, according to the approval, do you want to apply? I've listened long and well, second, Alderman Johnson, any discussion on the motions to approve the law key? Okay, now, all there today, aye. Aye. All both at the same time, aye? Thank you. Okay, next time on, on the agenda is public hearing. Uh, public hearing for short term and power of the council. Uh, for the public hearing, we ask that those who wish to speak for or against the proposed ordinance, so forth to the microphone and give your name and address to the record. Have anyone who wishes to speak for or against the public hearing? Very much.
My name is Janice Rell, I'm a twenty zero three five couple. Um, I just wanted to, uh, comment a lot because, um, I know that you know all these things about the nature of that, uh, but, uh, payday loans, but just to, to review and evaluate for, um, the huge interest rate and the way it's set up to capture people into a cycle of debt that really does ruin their financial lives. I remember the first time I brought this to your attention, I brought a picture of two payday loans to refer next to each other in a strip mall called Hyde with that in Blue Springs, and that, I brought it because I feared that that's what we would become because Blue Springs had passed an ordinance to limit the number of payday loans and essentially more payday loans would, would come into, uh, Blue Springs and I felt they were moving down the road towards us and, and I wanted it to be fair. Um, it, it swells on the crimes connected with the prison payday loan. That crime usually is, uh, a lease of life, that people who weigh from the area where the payday loan is. Uh, we know that payday loans, um, take money out of the community, our community members, we may have money to spend at Patricia's or anywhere else in town, uh, don't have it because of, because either payday loan, um, uh, is banned. Um, all in all, it's shown really beyond any other doubt that it's, it's a negative in a community. We know that business people who are looking at other communities do look at payday loans and the number of payday loans in the community, uh, as a factor because they know that there are a lot of payday loans that'll be left available money, they're going to go to service and people opening. Um, in addition, um, uh, recently with your help, uh, we tried to stop the passage of a bill, uh, that, uh, told the city what they could legislate about and, uh, that was unsuccessful, so you, you all can pass a bill that says you can't have plastic bags in the city or charge for plastic bags, and that will prove to me, but, um, I'm afraid, very much afraid, it's a very powerful tip in the city, allowing, uh, of payday loans to see this as a way to make sure that, um, cities can't, uh, lose some control from payday loans and in the near future will have a similar bill as H V seven twenty-two and so on issues that is done and grandfathered here. And, uh, uh, I, I just appreciate all your time and patience with my showing up now to him, uh, about this issue and I, I did attend most of the thing and don't even, I am going to be very, um, knowledgeable on the issue and, um, and I believe it's passed and the, the, um, uh, ordinance that's, that you're considering and also, um, thanks, uh, Mr. Murphy, for his part, and God, I know, with the, my research under his heart. So I very much ask you to, uh, consider passing this ordinance which, uh, which will not ban payday loans, but lose control when you come in and there it can come. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Uh, anyone else who wishes to speak for again?
Janice, please, at five fifteen Southwest, you have your eye. Um, ever since Jan, the thing was, you know, and for all the reasons, to try to get some of the, the particular issue, and, and, uh, this is one of the, I, 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 this is our opportunity to stop it, to, 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 and it's also our opportunity to stop it, which actually is really best for. So I just pray you to look at what the government, to have a, and to, I would give you, uh, decent sentiment, especially.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak for again? Okay, now, a close public hearing. And items in our ordinances.
Mayor, the first ordinance is bill B fifteen dash twenty, second reading ordinance, amending chapter two fifteen offenses, section two fifteen, four ten, eight three, weapons, carrying seal, um, other unlawful uses, and it will be ordinance two, three, six, nine. Second read.
Mayor, do you want to accept bill fifteen dash twenty for a second reading, ready? And make it ordinance twenty three sixty nine?
I've listened long and well, Arnoldson through bill B fifteen dash twenty for a second reading, make it ordinance twenty three sixty nine, five seconds. Second one, intended. Any questions? Okay, now, all there today, aye. Aye. All both at the same time.
Arnold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Headland?
Yes.
Headland?
Yes.
Alloch?
Yes.
West? Adams? Next. This bill be fifteen dash twenty one, which on a first reading, an ordinance amending chapter four hundred zoning regulations, section four hundred point zero four zero, definitions, and section four hundred point two four zero conditional uses to define and regulate short term entitled loan establishments. First reading, bill be fifteen dash twenty one.
Mayor, is it, that bill be fifteen dash twenty one, for first reading, and break back for a second reading by title?
I've listened long and well, I'll accept the approved bill B fifteen dash twenty one for its first read, break back by the power of the second read, five seconds. Second, all normal. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm the board, and I'd like Mr. Murphy to take just a moment and kind of go over this, uh, ordinance, as you know, it's an ordinance, quite some time, and I know that's gotten through planning and zoning, but quick summary of this, uh, level.
Yeah, of course, I'd like to say, and put the memo up there from, uh, City Attorney Cook, Dan Gere, that kind of, uh, summarized some of the, the research that was done. But basically, after the board directed staff to work with legal and the planning commission to, um, look at addressing, uh, short term lending establishments, we found a few things. Um, one of the biggest things being the neighborhood impact that comes with them. Um, not only is, well, documented, despite in private, but property values with that also tend to go down. So, uh, kind of the big thing that we looked at was limiting, um, distance that those payday establishments can be from residential areas, schools, churches, um, businesses selling alcohol, and adult businesses. Uh, the number that we went with was twelve hundred fifty feet, which is what we use for a lot of those other, uh, additional uses, like adult bookstores and that type thing. So it wasn't just an arbitrary number, it was something that we, we've gone with. Um, but basically, you'll look, uh, the first thing we needed to do was actually define, um, what it was that we were trying to do, so that's the first part of the ordinance, is defining short term loan establishments and title loan establishments. Uh, so that's pretty much just the, you know, textbook definition, but something we have to have in the narrative to, uh, be able to enforce this. And then you'll see, we've got, uh, basically ten conditions that go along with it, um, the, the, the twelve hundred fifty feet, that what we were trying to do was make sure that, you know, uh, when one came in, the more can be clustered together, because research shows that when they're clustered together, everything, uh, goes up, you know, crime, uh, goes up even more. Uh, so we use that twelve hundred fifty feet, uh, measurement for most of these conditions. The other thing we looked at was a maximum of three year term. Um, the thought behind that was things change, you know, whether it's a church going in somewhere or a school going in somewhere, um, not getting ourselves in a position where we grant one of these permits and then three years later, the school district builds a school or, um, a church goes down, so it's not getting free rate forever. Um, so again, we have to review that after three years and make sure that everything still works. You know, those are kind of the highlights, I said, there's ten there, but they're basically the, the, kind of the summary.
Do you have any questions, any questions?
Just a comment that did, plain looking thing, we're filled up, yeah, on this, means really far and illegal, make it a, well, presenting to the board here tonight would be something that will hopefully stand on its own, not have a issue, you know, because of that, your job, got you in that, we, 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 we don't need it, we, 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 we.
Okay, do you have additional? All there today, aye. Aye. All both at the same time.
Six zero, first of all.
Do you know, Ruth, Lucy, move on to the P D C A report?
I've been reporting.
Uh, then, do you have a figure in the data report? Um, I'd like to start with Mr. David.
Um, a couple of things, uh, our third annual Trail Retreat event is coming up on Friday, October twenty-third, it's at six thirty P M. Basically, we'll, we'll stay there and, uh, until a lot of people come through. And just kind of a reminder, I know most of y'all have attended the event before, we utilized the west loop at Butterfly Trail, uh, for this event, uh, just in part due to the involvement of our local businesses to come out, um, and set up longer trails from the opportunity to, to engage the community with information about the business, hand up candy, so forth and so on. And then also through the trail, we have different spooky scenes and cute activities and giveaways and things like that, um, things of that nature. So, um, we do have a lot of the same scenes and activities as we had last year, but we also have a lot of new, uh, scenes and activities, so, for this one coming up. Uh, one of them is we're actually utilizing the heat trail loop for a hayride that families can, can go on, um, so we're really looking forward to the event, include, include marketing on the calendar, being we all wish to volunteer, please, like, me or, or, we will know, I'm sure we can find an opportunity for you, um, and, uh, so, let us know on, on that. Uh, one other thing that I had, and I, I think I agree, we mentioned this, oh, about a month ago, uh, we compete in the Eastern Jack, kind of municipal challenge under several Eastern Jackson County, uh, communities that participate in this event, Olympic, Olympic style events that city employees, uh, participate in, we partner with the Grove, and make a team, and of course, it's, it's, that's between Blue Springs, that's, you know, and it concluded about a month ago, uh, we didn't, we weren't able to take away the first place trophy, which I believe it went to independent, um, being Blue Springs, which I, 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 I probably by one point, but we did end up in third place, we, um, rate challenge, but there are several individual events that employees participate in, it's all team events as well. Um, and so we recently, we were able to, uh, acquire the, some medals that, that, that we had won, and one event in, in particular, uh, that I'd like to make note of, that we, there was a Sam volleyball competition in Blue Springs, our Sam volleyball team took a, a place this year. All of our employees have received their medals, but there's one individual that did not receive the medal, uh, tonight, and so I would like to take this up, and, and take this medal up to all of the family who was on the volleyball team.
If we were to cheat, I would, I should have won.
We will be competing again next year, so, and we all would like to take, take, take this one up.
Can I add, Janice, and we only had, what, six players playing the whole time? We had like fifteen, twenty people for our six, we were playing, the same people, it was, it was exchange out people, so, we were playing two man shows.
It was a long time.
Yeah.
Long, long.
Yeah, so, I handled myself, we were getting, with the bear.
I wonder basketball, they look that up.
I mean, I'm with a non-eat show, you get, you know, a lot of.
Oh, you did, they called you, yeah, when, when, did you participate?
No, you said you're not eating, you know, you know, I'm, I'm, I mean, you said, you said, you said, they were looking hard at ninety five, I'm, 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 I'm a teenager.
Got a trophy to give out?
No.
I have all that.
No, I just talked to you about training.
Oh, yeah.
Friday, you received an email from me that talks about, and there was a training program that we were like, we'll, 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 uh, you, and the training program, you, you, you need to, 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 you received a email, so you should have received, uh, another email that has specific information regarding a, um, regarding a, um, password and code that you can use to access the website, and, um, unfortunately, you, 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 you , but we have activated, there's, 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 you, 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 that training is all online, you do it twenty-four seven, uh, and I am never going to help you with it, and you, the website, you, 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 I feel like you're telling me to retrain you, because, like, you're, 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 you're , you know, you need my, you need, you need what?
You're, 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 you're required.
Well, you, you have to be nice. It's all in the way you sell it. Uh, and so, and it's, uh, if you have a, you have a password, I know you, you have had, had, heard some, uh, you know, let me know, uh, and I'm sure you can, 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 Open the logic after I, I, uh, so, I'll be sending you, uh, that, you see, and, uh, you have your questions, let me know.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, the few things that I had, uh, this Friday, we have a employee event out of the property, it's an I bar in Main Street. Named, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, the property that we recently acquired. Meeting from eleven A M to two P M, and we'll be seeing each other, I'll be here while, um, having sandwiches out there. So the employees come out through the property and take a look at the seat, that's what we, 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 uh, talk a little bit about. Uh, the second thing is that we need to schedule what, uh, should be our last workshop. We have two days, as we kind of went through the calendar, that seem to stand out the most, so on, it's just these two days to board, find out, um, your availability. We can do additional dates, and I have a decent work, but, uh, the first one would be Monday, next Monday, the nineteenth, at six P M. And it would be held over in the wine and purchase room, because we have four, we have four inherent that night. Uh, the other alternative that we had, uh, was a trailer treat, all the Chinese, we have coming up for that, would not be in the following Monday, which is the night where it's scheduled for meetings, we've got, uh, four, uh, four meetings, two at half. So it would end at nineteen, for the, um, if anybody knows off topic, has a very good indication now, uh, you're not just, uh, somebody's email. I'm not there, because we didn't, we didn't like to. Will you, nineteen?
Uh-huh.
I don't know. What we'll do is, uh, we'll, right now, it sounds like the nineteenth, but everybody's available for, for all the deadly, um, they will come. I'll send a date tomorrow, and I'm sure she goes out to board, see if there's another, uh, whatever. Yeah, we can, so, uh, on the, we're trying to do workshops a little earlier, but that's, uh, initially, I see. Okay, we'll just go ahead and play on Monday, the nineteenth, seventeen, and then, uh, not getting further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anything else for the, for the, for the, on it? Over in Alcat? Over in Arnold?
Over with.
Any, over the, over what? Over Jonathan?
Yeah, it's been a constant source of contention, I'm, uh, actually, this is Dr. Hoff, he's been with us today, as well, and students are, um, scrolling, it, it seems like. They are, seems like the, uh, the, 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 they run our rush hour, so, keep an eye, um, and have, had conversations with, with, uh, gave each other in the past. Um, today, we talked about it in the department meeting, and we'll go ahead and run it up the bike pole as, uh, far as we can. Did sit down with somebody that were actually listening, because right now, the only thing that we got, we have to sit, we call them. The only thing we did is contact the dispatch center, and they basically tell us, here's what they're doing out there, and this is, you know, how long are they going to be there?